Meeting to order. Today is Monday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, um his staff taking all.
Uh Commissioner Carlos Perez is excused, Commissioner Bob Howard is excused, Commissioner John Graver.
Here.
Commissioner Richard Lumsdale.
Here.
Commissioner Anne Warman.
Here.
Commissioner David Johnstone.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Austin Walker.
Here.
Okay, I'm gonna ask everyone to rise for the pledge allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just as.
Both board members have a chance to read the minutes?
Yes.
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 Do I hear a minute, a doer of motion for approval? Make the motion.
Second.
One favor. Do we have any communications?
Uh, just a quick uh department update, so the code updates that uh you recommended for council approval at the last meeting. Um will be reviewed at the next study session. So that'll be the first Tuesday in October. Uh, and then I did wanna let you know that the traffic facilities charges. Um, were updated for the first time in uh several years from one thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars per. Peak PM trip to three thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars per peak PM trip. Um, and that was approved last month, so new development will be subject to those charges. Uh, and that's. Those are our two updates.
Um, does anyone, this the, this has nothing, this not pertaining to. The public meeting, this is just, does anyone here have uh in the audience uh would like to address the. Commission comments are limited to three minutes. About five speakers, comment on matters listed in the agenda are welcome. If there is anyone that wants to comment, ask them to come to the podium, state their name, address for the record.
Are you asking if any of us want to speak?
Yes. Okay, if you come to the podium, state your name and your dress, please.
Uh, hey, John, oh. So it's uh, let's open the public hearing.
Already?
If you, if this is for the rezone, you want that comment to come during.
So I said, it's always not for the public hearing. This is just for.
You're guessing the reason, I'm guessing.
Any unfinished business? Uh, any report of new business? Hey, well, here we go for the public meeting. Sorry, I had to make Sam go back down again. All right, um, today is Monday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, I opened the own planning commission public hearing meeting at four oh three. Um, today's hearing is on the reap, the purpose, proposed rezone of parcel. Two, one, seven, two, four, two, three, zero, four, zero, zero. From R four to R sixteen, under the condition that eight percent of the units are designated. For affordable housing referenced in agenda item number nine. I will now open the floor for public testimony, if there is anyone wishing to speak. Please uh raise your hand.
The online button, there's no.
Sorry about that, I'm taking out, you got buttons out there now, okay? So anyway, raise your hand and we'll call you to come to the podium, uh and then of course, name and address.
So when did you say the hearing was gonna be for, would you say purpose?
No, I, what we didn't use a name, we used a parcel number.
Oh.
So is uh, sign me to repeat the parcel number?
We know the parcel number and that it's about the rezoning. Of what is outlined there in orange yellow, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I misunderstood.
That's okay.
So ma'am, would you like to come up? And you would state your name and address, please.
Uh, Patsy Butler, one, four, six, three, zero, Berry Valley Road, yeah. Okay, so my questions, I know I have three minutes, I'm gonna ask all the questions.
Sure.
All right, so um, I'm wondering how many acres that is? And um, this where it says um, every median income, I'm wondering what that amount is. I'm wondering where it says minimum of eight. Percent of the units, I'm wondering, could that also be a hundred percent? It's a minimum, I know what the maximum is. And then, in other words, is it gonna be low how, income? And then I'm wondering on the traffic generation memo. I know we came to the hearing for the um, one that was on. The nine apartment complex on Tohoma Boulevard, and we've also been another one on the summit. At Thompson Creek that has a hundred and nine houses. And so we're concerned about how we're gonna get out of our road. And so I had asked if they were gonna put in a light, but. The answer, I mean, my understanding was it didn't really affect the traffic, which I couldn't really understand how it couldn't, you know, with all the. You know, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of cars, and so I'm wondering the same thing on this then. What, how will we get out of our road? Will there be a light or something at this point? I'm thinking at some point. It's gotta affect the traffic, right? And then um, I'm also wondering on the separate environmental review thing. Does the creek come into play and how does it come in and how are they protecting that? Oh, and then the other thing, when the um, when the nine apartment complex. No, 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 the summit at Thompson Creek, the hundred and nine houses, they said that they're gonna go through. Jackson Street, so we drove up there after the hearing. And at the start of it, it's like, you know, why isn't it, oh, this works really well, but right away. It, it, they doesn't have a white line that to me indicates that it's two lane anyway, but so it's just a road. But then the people park here and they park here, so it is a one lane. There's, and so I don't really think any of those people are gonna use that because if they. They're gonna end each other, so they're only gonna come down Berry Valley Road to go out, so that's. That's why we're thinking between that and this and the other one. Let's.
Yeah. Um, and uh, are you done with your questions?
Yes.
Oh, okay, alright, well, the one I can certainly feel would be the one that uh. The eight percent is a mandatory amount. The reason that we have uh the eight percent is that we are requiring developers to do it because they don't wanna do it. So you could have a developer that had, uh, if, if they had. Were one of money that wanted to. Give this to people that were low income, they could build low income. But um, I can tell you at least the people that, that are right now coming in to build. Their eight percent is to them a lot, you know, so they're not looking to expand that amount. Uh, like I said, it's just something that we're requiring of them.
And is this gonna be housing than houses, or is this apartments?
Um, it's just, it's just eight percent of the development.
Oh, so we really don't know.
No, it would happen, but it would have to be eight percent, in other words, uh, if, if there was a hundred, you know, if there were hundred units. Whether single family, you know, if they would have to be eight, eight houses if it was a hundred apartments. You know, that kind of thing, of course, this is not apartments for COVID. Sales, but.
Yeah, it'll be very likely that there'll be multifamily, so apartments, um, based on the uh. Density requirement, or the density that they want, which is our sixteen, uh sixteen units per acre. And I have it up on the screen up there of what uh sixty percent AMI is. So I took these numbers from the HUD. Um, and they're a little bit older, twenty twenty-three, and based on um, just. Comparing apples to apples, I did it for a single uh, a single household, so one person. And sixty percent is fifty-two thousand, five hundred seventy-five. Thousand dollars gross, um, which. Goes into the monthly income of four thousand, three hundred eighty-one dollars, uh, which would make affordable rent one thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. So that's, that's what it looks like, and also it goes up to in the affordability covenant. We have it listed to go up to eighty percent, so if someone, you know, gets job growth and whatnot, as long as they're under eighty percent. By the time they renew a lease, um, they'll still be welcomed there for the remainder of that year. Uh, so you have a lot of flexibility and, and really um, trying to promote, you know, the younger uh. People, younger people in Yelm um, that are just starting their careers, so. Uh, we wanted that flexibility to go up eight percent as well.
Do you mind if I take a picture of that?
Absolutely. Doesn't I don't take.
I can get one of you in it if you want.
Uh, and these, yeah, these are uh estimates and, and again, they're from twenty twenty-three, but they're, they're gonna be. Uh, relatively close to what it'll be when, when the development goes up.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're very welcome.
Did you field some of the other questions, Dave? I don't have the amount of uh.
Uh, the acreage is fourteen point seven acres.
Oh, really? Wow.
And uh, in terms of the wetland, um, Thompson Creek, so the. Is in my staff, we're here, and it's a hundred and fifty foot buffer. From the creek, um. Yeah, so they have to, whatever building they put will have to meet that hundred and fifty foot buffer. From the edge of the.
And I, so I'm assuming it is gonna be um sewer and city water. And so like all of us that are on wells and septic, that doesn't affect us, we don't have to go on, right?
Correct.
It helps you though, because if you do need to go on, it's now right in front of your house. So like if your well fails and you're like, I need water right now, help me, we can pay you right there. So I know that no one ever dreams of that, but it does happen, so.
Um, and then about the stoplight?
So when they, that'll be kind of the next portion of this project, so. Um, right now, we're just in the rezone, but when they actually submit a formal proposal, um, it'll go to the hearing examiner. Um, and so there'll be another public hearing based on their specific project. Um, and with that, they'll have to do a traffic impact analysis. And we don't know what that. Impact analysis will um, say, you know, whether they need to put off, off, like off-site improvements and improve an intersection. Either right there or somewhere down the line, um, we won't know that until we get a formal application in and. Uh, in terms of like get act, like a. When the buildings are going up, so to speak.
So um, what is, what helps you determine that it should stay four per acre or move to sixteen per acre?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
Yeah.
Okay, um, you're trying to decide if it's okay if instead of four, they go sixteen, what helps you to decide that?
A strategy to provide more housing. And lower cost housing, if at all possible, but more housing. Within what's called the uh urban growth area of Yelm. Because the population is in need of it.
Yeah, we're being charged with. Some housing somewhere.
Yeah, and I'm sure you're totally aware that the, the infrastructure really just. You know, road wise, so that's, I guess.
We know that we're having concerns, and that is.
There's, what do you can do about the road?
Oh, so they're going in that have to do with the highways that are coming in and. And roundabouts and such. Um, we wish that. Those were already done, or they have been done a year or two ago, but at least they're definitely happening now. Uh, they're actually moving the uh, what is it, the power and, and other connections that are being moved by now. For the uh, for the bypass. The go-ins, and with that, there'll be um, uh, also. Three, I don't have it exact, I have to ask Drew or say. Or maybe Cody, how many roundabouts are we getting, maybe is it four?
Yeah, and there's a couple other, you're, you're right on the factors, so if you look at the zoning around it. Um, so we try to, the parcel is our, it's right, yeah. Yeah, so if you look at the zoning around it, we try to do things similar into what's zoning around, so the master plan community is about the same density. And you'll see there's an R sixteen zone right across the street from it. Um, so we try to match zoning with what it is, so if they were trying to propose an R sixteen zone like right next to, you know. Somewhere that there wasn't other zoning similar, we wouldn't do it, but since it matches the zoning, we have a housing. We need to create more affordable housing to seem like a good area, plus getting the affordable housing part of it. Implemented so we can get some affordable housing, like Commissioner Graver said, is that most people don't wanna build affordable housing. When they first came to us, they go, nope, we wanna build high-end apartments, and that's all we want, so we, you know, negotiated with them to get this affordable housing, to get some of that. Medium AMI in there, so. That's how we come into all, all those factors playing too, if we decide that we are going to bring a rezone to plan and commission or not.
Is there any plan then on Jackson Street to widen it so that they actually would have an option besides our, their value?
No, but there is a um, if you, so on the new development that's coming in on Summit, they're stubbing out to Ninety-third. So if you go zoom up a little, or go out a little bit. So the summit at Thompson Creek has a stubout that'll be connecting on the other end there that'll eventually connect to Ninety-third. So Ninety-third, you know, comes down off of uh, right across from Burnett Road. Oh, you see right there, so there'll be a connection from Ninety-third, so they'll have that exit as well. Plus, there's going, there's another stubout as a master plan community, which we're trying to figure out right now, that'll connect that master plan community, so there'll be another entrance coming off Toma Boulevard. Farther up, so it'll be three different entrances they'll get, right now, they only have the two with these future ones coming. As a hope, yeah. So, we can only plan to hope that they come in, they will, but it's just how long that'll take.
Yeah, the whole word doesn't sound good.
No, it has changed.
Hope word doesn't sound good.
We've done a good job about growing, and they also, they have to do improvements to Berry Valley Road. So the one thing, you probably already know that Berry Valley Road would be expanded to an actual road with sidewalks and lanes, and they have to give up land to make that happen.
Yeah, so, yeah, could you elaborate, when you say do improvements to the Berry Valley Road, what exactly? You just mentioned sidewalks, you're gonna widen the road, but what exactly does that mean for the people that have homes on that road? Like my brother, like my neighbor, the butlers, and many other neighbors that we know that live on that street.
Yeah, so the benefit is they're going to do, they're giving up acreage or land of theirs to widen the road, you guys don't have to do anything. The road will be widened on your end, they, you'll still have the pavement on your side that'll be ended. There'll be a curb gutter installed on the other side with a sidewalk, and then whenever a future development comes on your side, they'll. Add another sidewalk to your side, but you don't have to give up any land at this point, it's just them doing the improvements and giving up land on their end.
Okay, when you say at this point, what does that mean?
So if you sell, if you, your brother said, I'm gonna sell my property to developer, and developer wants to come in and build twenty houses where you, I don't know where you lived, but five houses. They would have to then add sidewalk and do the extra part of improvements on their side.
That, that would only come up in the event that somebody decided to sell their home.
Or develop, if they wanted to develop on their own, they could do it too, but if you're a single family home, you'd be exempt, so if you live there for the rest of your life and your kids live there, and they wanna live in that single family home. They wanna rebuild that single family home, they would never have to build these improvements unless they were so kind, they wanted to help you out, you want me to do it?
Well, that's good to know, so it's not like eminent domain or anything like that.
No, not for this, um, because the road's already there and they're developing, we can let them expand. We, we force them to give up some of their land to expand that road, because they are gonna put additional strain on Berry Valley, and Berry Valley is our worst rated road in Yelm. So they'll, they'll do that expansion, complete the, fix the road, the culver we can fix with uh. The summit, the summit's gonna be replace that bridge and widen it, so you'll have all that done with these two developments coming in, that has to be done before a single house can be built. So all of that'll be done, you'll have a new road with sidewalks all before.
And so that road don't actually be a two-lane road, white line, the whole.
Everything, it'll be just like a nor, a good two-lane, like this, what I hear, you'll, you'll have the sidewalks, everything with gutters, it'll be beautiful, is my hope, so, yeah. It'll, it'll be great, you'll love it, and you'll be able to walk from a sidewalk from your house all the way to Toma Boulevard, if you have grandkids, they'll go to high school or kids. You could, a hundred percent, and that's where hoping everybody walks or rides a bus.
Summer clown in every line. Lighting in every cloud.
Yeah, the sidewalks sound amazing, so much safer for all of us that like to walk. And so the sidewalks sound amazing, my brother, I know, has some questions, but at least for myself. When um, the people that are living in this development of apartments or whatever it's gonna be, homes or apartments. When they exit the development, do you know where that road will exit? My brother was pointing out to me that, and, and maybe David, can you go up and show on that?
Yeah, if you bring the plot plan back up on.
So he'll point out.
Give you some uh patience here, I forgot my mouse and the zooming is a little bit difficult to uh.
It's my brother David, basically, and he lives on Berry Valley Road.
One, four, five, four, four. So. See, where is it? Right there. Um, the plot plan I saw had a, an entrance right here, and it was in between the apartment buildings that they were showing on this particular. And I don't know how, you know, if this is all. Ready to go on, if it's gonna be townhomes or apartment buildings, but it showed kind of right. And almost at the front of my house is where one entrance is gonna be to go into this place, and another one over here. And um, so we were curious, like Denise just said, is it gonna be just one entrance or two entrance? Or what is it gonna be?
Based on the size of the number of units, they'll have to have two. Um, where they are is really subject to speculation at this point. Um, they just don't have a, an actual site plan in yet, um, but they would be required to have two.
Okay, well, we have some comments about the egress and the, the exit and the. Okay, so on that, um, there's a sharp corner, and David, can you point it out?
Yes, this corner here.
That is a very sharp corner, blind much at the time because of the tall grass. Um, and so our concern is if you take that exit near that sharp corner. And there's kids walking to school, which there will be kids walking to the high school. That would present a very big hazard, okay, for not just the people driving on the road, but for the kids walking to and from school. So we wanna let you know right from the get-go that that sharp corner really needs to be paid attention to. And where you take the street in and where you take it out really has to be analyzed carefully, okay? So we wanna make sure you guys have notes on that, because we've lived on this road for decades, so we know. What happens on that corner, and I don't know if there's a plan to smooth that corner out, is there possibly?
Or, the road would be widened, um, so I can't remember how many feet it is wide right now, but it would be. Roughly doubled the width.
Oh, it would be double the width that, that it is right now.
I don't wanna say that specifically doubled, but it'd be close to being doubled, um, so I think it's. You know, roughly like fifteen feet wide right now.
It's very narrow.
Yeah, it's really narrow, so that's going back to uh, as Cody was saying. When they build, they'll have to dedicate. Approximately fifteen feet of their property um, into their property line to accommodate for a wider road. Uh, so the road will be wider, that curve will inherently be wider because the road's wider, um.
Okay, and you just explained that that fifteen feet comes into the development side, not on the side of the property owners. Okay.
Yep.
So the sidewalk is only on one side of the street, right?
Initially, yes.
Initially, yeah.
And you called it a, a curb and a sidewalk and a, uh, you called it uh.
Better, better, better sidewalk in a plan.
Better and sidewalk, okay. Alright.
You know, just add to that, Denise.
Yeah.
I was just gonna mention, um, over the years, I've lived on Berry Valley Road my whole life. And uh, known Jake and Patsy my whole life, but. They've had a lot of times on this sharp corner, I'm glad you said you're going to try to, to. Round this corner out, because many times you've had many people end up in Jake and Patsy's front yard. Missing that corner and, you know, going through the ditch, or taking out Margie's mailbox going the other way, so. I'm glad to hear you're doing that, and one other suggestion I have is I own these two parcels here. And right now, what happens is the few high school kids we have. Um, end up just walking through my lot and going up to the high school, but what we really need is a concrete pathway. Or especially with all of these, all this development going on, that there's gonna be a lot of high school kids, and they really need a nice. Concrete sidewalk to where they can get to the high, walk to the high school, because right now, all it is is a trail or brush or walk through my property. And uh, I was hoping that that could also be looked into.
Yeah, is, I'm guessing since your property they're cutting through, are you proposing we put a concrete sidewalk on like your property to put it through? Would you be willing to give up some?
Owns the property beside Margie and Jake's. It does school, that's, that would be the place to put the sidewalk there.
Yeah, that would be perfect, and very appropriate since it's school kids going to the high school. And so um, and I wanted to introduce my mom, this is Darlene Baker.
I know Darlene.
Yeah.
Remember me, Darlene? Richard Berry's my dad. Yeah.
We've known him for, I think, how many years?
Yeah, eighty-nine we moved here. Virgil, she gave me candy, she was so great.
You told me that, because Richard Berry is one of my favorite people, and I know for sure my parents' favorite people, so, um. Yeah, we just want to make sure that um, I'll, I'll have to be honest, on the low income. And I, I like to be equitable on everything, but I think everyone in this room would agree that with low income. Much of the time, what happens is crime, drugs. That's bribery, et cetera. It just comes with the territory.
And when we talk about low income on these, and when you see the, the um. The annual uh salary level. That's basically middle income for most people. And, and the low, low income is, is, has to be in supported or um, what is the term?
Section eight, yeah, yeah, I mean, this is not section eight, it's nearly twice the federal poverty level, yeah.
Well, that helps, that deserved helps, it's a regular folks that just are starting.
Lot, a lot of, lot of that in that pay range is, is because I mean, Yelm has a lot of military. And a lot of the militaries in that pay range, so um, that's kind of one of the areas that they're targeting as well.
It's, it's a different demographic, I, there are people out there that are. Are problematic, but it's not the ones that we're talking about.
And I don't think we can do much with the, I mean, it's a great idea, and I understand exactly where you're talking about, you know, for the. Uh, for the walkway for the children, for the kids, um, but uh, that is school grounds. Not us, you know, and so I would make, what I would think is, it would be a really good thing to go to the school board, you know, to see if. If we get something there, cuz you're right, it, I. I've been down the road many, many times, and I have seen kids, you know, going back and forth, it, no.
Yeah, we have an open line of communication with the school district as well, and uh, their facilities director, Chris Hanson. Um, so we've, we've worked with them on multiple other projects and connect, connecting the safe routes to schools. So that is something that, when this development continues to move forward, um, we can talk to the school and talk to Chris. Both Chris's, um, and see if that would be something that they're interested, overall, they would have kind of the, the say in that. Um, but it is something that we could um facilitate and, and encourage.
Definitely, cuz they're gonna need something, I used to, when I went to school, Yelm High School, mom lived right near that area. Um, I would walk through right by Jade, Margie's house, Jake's house, there's a little trail through there, and I could just cut through on my way home. But I'm sure most kids would prefer instead of riding a school bus, which I'm not sure they even bring a school bus, you know, it's actually close to the school. But to have something that's suitable, I mean, right now, that trail, it's got Scotch broom, I mean, to, by the time you get to. School, your pants are soaking wet and, you know, it's just not really a, a good situation.
Yeah, it hasn't been good for twelve years, cuz that's when I retired. Out in the high school, and the thirty years that I taught there, I, I mowed a path. When they put in the fence, I talked to the superintendent, I said, hey, how about a gate? And he put me in the gate, so you know, there was a, it was probably six foot wide path that, that I mowed and. Yeah, you know, kept up, you know, like I said, I retired twelve years ago and it hadn't been mowed since.
Name the path after you. Oh, does anybody have any further? Uh, questions or comments?
I don't have a question, but I'd just really like to thank all of you, I think you've been really, you've listened well, and I feel like you really actually care. That's really encouraging to us, you know? And so, yeah, I just really appreciate your time and, you know, your willingness to listen and your willingness to actually consider things and. You know, not just blow us off and say, well, it is, you know, so, thank you.
Thank you for bringing your concerns to our attention.
You too.
I live in the country and. You know, I mean, somebody come along and say, oh, by the way, I'm gonna be, you know, increasing all of this, and actually, I did live in Yelm, they did increase. Uh, for development. Didn't go lightly with me, but, you know, realized after a while, it wasn't so bad, you know?
Do you know when they're gonna break ground on this?
It's really up in the air, um. They would have to, so from here. They would have to, so from here, depending on whether planning commissioner approves this or recommends it to council, it'll go to council next month. Um, and they'll vote on it. If they approve it, then we can start getting into a site plan. So they have to submit a site plan. Um, that has to go through our land use approval, so we make sure that um, everything, you know, the land is good for it. And then uh, we'll have a, once we're happy with what the site plan looks like, um, we'll schedule a public hearing. Um, so we'll do something very similar to this, um, where we'll actually have the proposed uh, ingress egress and. Um, you can kind of pick apart the site plan if you wanted to. Um, and then, once it has hearing examiner approval, then they go into the utilities and how are they gonna connect it to water and sewer and get all the lighting details. Um, civil approval happens. And then after that, uh, they get, they apply for their building permits and then they can start moving ground. So it's fast. It takes a while.
I'm under the assumption, though, the road's gonna be done no matter what happens with this because that was part of the other.
Yeah, so the utility, so the um, basically the infrastructure has to go in before any homes or housing units go in.
And when they do start, I remember David mentioning. Uh, with this other development that's happening, I don't know the name of it, but it's near uh, to Home of Boulevard. A lot of dust, he has a picture. Is there gonna be some stipulations about dust? I know dust is more of an issue in the summer, but even in the fall, it becomes an issue. Um, is there gonna be a lot of detail about keeping the dust at a minimum?
They should have a dust control plan. Um. What, and if they're not abiding by that, um, the best thing you can do is call us. Um, and let us know, cuz otherwise we we probably just won't see it. Um. You know, we don't, you you all live there and are around it, so you're gonna be much more aware of things, but. Um, feel free to give us a call if you if you see anything that um, is causing a nuisance for you.
You should be able to see dust, brush it. Yes, it's just on September tenth, I just happened to go outside and I saw this dust heading. That's heading towards the new development that's already there onto Home of Boulevard.
It's pretty crazy and this goes everywhere. I mean, seriously, this is a mess. It goes on our houses, our windows. We have to wash everything, it's terrible. So if that could be part of the plan, a stipulation, we would really appreciate that.
The best thing to do when you see that is call us immediately. We can send the engineer out and tell them, get control of your dust or stop work.
I'm glad you mentioned that.
Yes, I can give you a card after this. Yeah, don't leave until I give you a card.
Literally in front of my parents'. They live up on the hillside, um, facing Mount Rainier.
Is that?
So this. This picture with this old barn right here.
Yeah, here's some.
More over here.
Here's the barns, they they, the barn and the house that's existing.
Our our parents live.
Right, right here.
Yeah, this is our parents' home right here and they've lived there since nineteen seventy.
So you see where the arrow is? It's to the right of the arrow.
To the right of the arrow?
Just to the right of the arrow, right, right there.
Yeah, it's the Tahoma Terra Commercial Project.
Part of the um, construction that's happening right now with another development that's going in. Uh, this was on September tenth, right, David?
Yeah.
September tenth, yeah.
Also, I just have a quick question. Um, as we throw it up on this street, that little Tahoma Creek is. Really nothing, but in the winter time, it's flooded all the way out. To, um, let's get my bearings straight here. Here's, this is kind of approximately where the creek's at. But it's flooded halfway out to about here. And in the old days, we've almost had to go all the way to the Berry Valley Road back in the seventies, you know?
Yeah, it did go all the way to Berry Valley Road, didn't it?
So how are they getting by that?
Yeah, with the hundred and fifty foot buffer, how are they dealing with that?
Uh, so the, it's kind of in conjunction with the Summit at Thompson Creek project as well because. Um, we know that that culvert is not uh, functioning effectively. Um, so with the Summit at Thompson Creek, they have to uh. Basically, build a bridge or culvert um, allowing better water passage, um, so it doesn't back up like that.
So, um, before, I know Bakers had wanted to be able to clean out and they weren't allowed to because of ecology. Wouldn't allow you to, you know, clean it out. So, um, and what I understand what you're saying with the road and and actually did used to. Be that sometimes they would have to take a little boat, you know? I mean, you know, really did.
True, yeah, yeah, really true.
And and so, um, anyway, uh, so that the culvert would take care of that, but the part that the creek all the rest of the way, I think that's. The other concern. I mean, I don't know how the culvert's gonna stop the creek from going.
Yeah, and I'm a planner, I'm not an engineer. I know my role. Um, but there the the Summit at Thompson Creek project is working with ecology and their engineers. Um, yeah, so they're not alone on that.
Yeah, because even if they did put in bigger culverts there, the creek is so plugged up with grass and trees. I remember back in the seventies, Jake Purvis, um, which is just on the other side of the culverts, he took a bulldozer. And tried to clean that all out and got in big trouble for it because.
Yeah, don't do that again.
But um, what he did, it really did help the creek run better, but I know he got in big trouble for that, but. Basically, if you don't want that creek to flood, you're, I don't know what else you can do, you know, because it is plugged up with. With every kind of thing you could think of, but. Anyhow.
Mom, do you have any questions?
No.
Diane?
No.
Okay, move that. I'll I'll just run through the the staff report briefly. Um, so we did receive the rezon request from uh, Mr. Matthew Girish. Order of parcel, um, it totals fourteen point seven acres. The proposal involves changing the property zoning designation designation from low density R four to uh, high density R sixteen. Uh, and as a condition, um, they must provide affordable housing. Uh, at or below sixty percent of the average median income for eight percent of the development. Uh, the first, the parcel currently has a single family home with two barns and two sheds. The property directly to the south. Our zoned, our properties to the south are zoned uh, master planned community and are currently being developed into a hundred and two unit apartment complex. A seven hundred sixty-nine unit storage facility, coffee shop with a drive-through, uh, and office building into commercial retail buildings, uh, and that's. Um, the properties to the north and west are zoned R four, many of them contain single family homes. Uh, the properties to the east are mostly zoned R four. Containing single family homes, while the property to the southeast is zoned R sixteen. Uh, Berry Valley Road will also serve the Summit at Thompson Creek. Um. And. Uh, any development, um, apartments, townhomes, uh, will be required to. Improve that road to local access resident or, I'm sorry, local um. Neighborhood collector. Standards. To uh, Summit at Thompson Creek flows through the western portion of the property, so there will be a hundred and fifty foot buffer. Uh, the gopher study was conducted. Or submitted on September twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. And was determined to have no pocket gophers. Uh, and then the rezon must be consistent with the goals of Washington State Growth Management Act. And the goals and policies of the City of Yelm Comprehensive and Housing Action Plans. Uh, those are listed in the staff report. Um. But the one I did want to uh, talk about is. See. So encouraging the availability of affordable housing to all economic segments, um. And promote a variety of residential densities, housing types and encourage preservation of existing housing stock. Um, allowing this or having, increasing the density will provide a lot of housing units close to commercial and other high uh, high density residential. The proposed rezon should be evaluated for internal consistency with the comprehensive plan, for consistency with the countywide planning policies. Um, related plans and the comprehensive plan of Thurston County. A public notice, uh, for the hearing was sent to property owners within three hundred feet of the property. And posted on or published in the Nusqually Valley News on August twenty-ninth. And after careful evaluation, staff find the proposed rezon is consistent with the city of uh, City of Yelm Comprehensive Plan and the Housing Action Plan. And recommend that the planning commission send the proposal to the city council with the following motion. Quote, the Yelm Planning Commission recommends the Yelm City Council approve the proposed rezon. Of parcel two one seven two four two three zero four zero zero. From low z- low, low density residential R four to high density residential R sixteen. Got a question?
Wait until after the public meeting to do the most.
Okay, so um, that was your first testimony. Okay, um, does the commissioner, any of the commissioners have further information they could share?
There's a question you want to ask your.
Did we want to close the public hearing prior to that or?
Ask it now.
Yeah, I I was just uh, wondering, I I see that we have section eleven, uh, implementing enforcement from the covenant. Does the city have any plans to uh, require uh, regular reports from the developer ensuring compliance with the affordable housing units? Or will the city be performing any regular audits to ensure compliance with the covenant?
Yeah, in the covenant, it, and I don't have the covenant right in front of me, um, but they will be required to submit.
A regular report.
A regular report. And it's on, what they'll have to submit is in, an example of it is on the last couple of pages in the covenant there. Um, where it lists the units, um. Number of, I think it's number of tenants. Um, it's in the, it's in the back there, right? Yes, we'll be providing enforcement by by requiring them to submit basically what's in the last few pages of the covenant there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, if nothing further, we're gonna close the hearing. Uh, I close the hearing at four forty-two. Um, thank you, everyone. Uh, do I hear a motion at this time?
I have a motion.
Second.
I motion that the Yelm Planning Commission. Recommend to the Yelm City Council to approve. The rezoning of parcel twenty-one seventy-two forty-two thirty-four hundred. From low density residential R four to high density residential R sixteen.
Now, do your second.
Second.
Uh, if there are anything further. Then I guess I'll close the uh, the meeting today.
Okay, do you want to do a subcommittee report?
Oh, okay.
Subcommittee reports, you know, on the parks.
Yeah, that would be great, yeah. Oh, we have left, yeah.
I have to admit, on the, on the parks, I've been mostly focused on on listening to all the wonderful activities that have been planned by um. When called our our activity director, but I guess that's what it is. And it's just been fabulous to see the number of participants in this, in the city park. Um, that are benefiting from that. Uh, a lot more activities down there than I've ever seen before. Um. I will go on and say that my focus this last time was on our trails. Uh, we've had the Prairie Line Trail new extension. Uh, for the Prairie Line Trail, open all the way to about a hundred feet before the bridge, uh, on the Nusqually. And it's opened in in June. And um. Uh, we found that it's not on the Thurston County bike maps. And so, um. For those of you that weren't in the meeting, I was nominated to go forward and and talk to uh, Paul Brewster to get it on the TRPC. Get the, some updates done. They're not updating the hard copies until this next year, but they're updating all the online ones. And uh, so now we have an official request and um, I talked to Paul and he said, yeah, write it up and let me know exactly what what it is. So, so that's been done. Um. And the project to take that trail across the Nusqually River on Bridge, the Trestle Bridge. Is at sixty percent, uh, the project, they have a project design to put down, um, was it concrete, prefab concrete panels. Across the top, so they don't have to tear anything up or mess anything up in the river or on the bridge. Just. Nails down and and it's uh. And of course. You know, one of the, I can't remember the. The actual, I think it's five foot, five foot high. Guardrails type of things, fencing, basically, that you see through, but it's gonna keep everybody from jumping.
Safety rails.
Yeah, safety rails on it. And a couple of bump outs so that you can get better views uh, in certain parts. So that's sort of the main thing.
Really good, yeah. It's great.
And. We kept the uh, water park open. Through Labor Day and that's, that's when it's supposed to be, but I saw it in the paper that there, you had one more weekend that you did.
Ninety-degree weather, you're like, we'll turn it on again for you.
It's now off.
Chris, you have anything?
Uh, three advisory board will be uh, by twenty-third. I might be sure to send a Zoom link to you. Uh, we're gonna work on planning our Arbor Day celebration for April. It's a lot of planning and a lot of packing for a one-hour fireworks show, so to speak. But the kids really enjoy it, the community really enjoys it, so. Really seeing what we could do with that. Historic Commission met earlier this month and we talked a little bit about the Centennial Celebration. Um, the artifacts that were formerly in the museum will be on display from Halloween until December eighth at the community center. So that'll make the history of Yelm a little more tangible to anyone who wants to visit that.
Someone wants to bring some articles of history.
Absolutely, we do have a lot of articles of history and half of the community center to use to decorate. So it'll be very interesting, it'll be really a lot of fun. We'll use some of our uh, parks and public service guys to help us unpack everything and put it out. Historic Commission will be there. So once that's up and running, we'll make sure to make a public announcement, so people will be welcome to come and. Visit a little bit of Yelm's history and heritage.
Great, Chris, that's great. Thank you. Okay, so. If nothing further, I will call this meeting to order to adjournment at four forty-seven.
We need a motion in a second.
Oh, sorry. I made a motion that we adjourned. My second. All favor.